Good evening and welcome to the Act and Selectmen's meeting of November 12. First, we'll salute the flag. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag, in the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Whenever you're ready, Jim.
All right, good evening. So just a list making up for last week. I wanted to start with just a recap of the election. I think first and foremost is a shout out to the election clerks that worked. We had a very long day. Some of them put in over 20 hours from start to finish, so we were very grateful for everybody that worked the election. We had 1,653 people vote in Acton with 54 new registrations on that day. It takes a lot, you know, that goes into everything from start to finish, so I think it's important for the board to publicly, you know, thank the everybody that worked, all everybody that sat at every table, whether they checked you in or cleaned up after you. We couldn't have done it without them, so.
We definitely appreciate it, that's for sure.
They did an awesome job.
Excellent, so. And we didn't have, we had one very minor, minor, minor issue and it was handled. A couple of people have asked me what we're doing with the drop box now that the election's over, that was installed out there on the walkway. We are, we're going to cover up the lettering that's there and turn it into just a town clerk tax collector drop box. It's still locked and secured, so people will be able to use it for other things during the rest of the year. So we will get to updating that hopefully next week. I wanted to double check with you about the holiday schedule to make sure that you're on board with it. We are hoping to be closed Thursday and Friday for Thanksgiving as we normally have been. Thursday is a paid holiday for anybody that would normally work. Friday, staff would use PTO time. We want to make sure that it's, the board's instruction that it's not optional to work. Either the office is open or it's closed, so that's going to be from your direction. Christmas this year falls on a Friday, so we are hoping to have Thursday off. Same thing would happen Thursday, Christmas Eve is not in the personnel policy, so staff would take PTO time or take it unpaid. And then Friday, if you were already scheduled to work, you would have Friday off. In regards to New Year's Eve and New Year's Day, in speaking with Michelle, New Year's Day really isn't a holiday of substance that we feel like we should be closed. In addition, we are trying to close out major books, so we would like to see the office open as scheduled on the 31st and then we would just be closed on January 1st and same idea with pay. So, and that's what you've done in the past. So, thoughts?
This year, New Year's Eve would be a Thursday?
New Year's Eve would be a Thursday, yes.
Thursday night.
Yeah.
Where you're scheduled to be open.
Right. I mean, we're open until 8:00. If people go out for New Year's Eve, I mean, 8:00 is still early enough.
So you want to be open Thursday but not Friday, right?
We would be open Thursday till 8:00 as scheduled and then we would be closed on Friday.
Okay. Has anybody else objected to that? Have you talked to?
I mean, I haven't, I haven't asked the staff. I mean, I've gone by past practice of what we've done in the past. You know, I hate to.
In the past, it's been a daytime, not a nighttime.
That's true, that's true, yeah.
The only difference that I see, so.
But if you close, I mean, it's going to be another unpaid day, just so you know.
Right. I would give them the option. I mean, if someone wants to take that night off.
Well, the problem with giving them the option is that I have to, if you're going to open the building, I have to make sure it's open, I mean, I have to make sure I have staff, right?
Enough people to open.
So, one way or the other.
So, say it again, Ed.
Well, I'm just thinking out loud. I mean, New Year's Eve is probably more so than New Year's Day, a holiday. Not a holiday, but the time when people go out or gather.
People up until midnight on that night, so you don't want them coming in to work the next day.
That's right, no, I don't want to be open, I don't want to be open New Year's Day, but I'm just saying where we're open till 8 o'clock that night.
Right.
You know, I would almost, I'd almost treat it like Christmas Day.
Yeah, I mean, however you guys want to do it.
Treat it like Christmas Eve.
I don't want the staff split up, so if I start giving them options.
Yeah, if it wasn't for the fact that we're open that night, if we were open Thursday during the day and closed at 4:00, I wouldn't have an issue.
Right, okay.
Or we open 4:00 to 8:00, I don't know.
Yeah, it's only 4:00 hours.
So, we'll close unless every single staff member agrees that they want to work? Is that fair?
I would say, and it's, once again, it's going to be PTO.
Right.
Right.
Yep, it's not a paid, it's not a paid.
I just, I mean, based on the staff that we have, I don't expect any of them to be out selling, you know what I mean?
No, probably not, and with everything else that's going on, probably not either, but.
But we'll ask, okay. So, I will individually ask them all, and if anybody indicates that they want to close, we'll close everything and it'll be PTO or, okay.
Sounds good.
All right, and we'll start advertising it. The Rec Committee, we have been working hard to get the Rec Committee back together and get enough members on it. We are at the point where we have enough. They are having their first meeting, it was posted two weeks ago. We posted it with the one current member we had, and as we've added them, we made sure the date was good, so it's been posted long enough. Tomorrow at 5:00. I do have information coming from the Treasurer in regards to the accounts and where they're at, so I will plan on attending the meeting, getting them started, getting the chair elected, and really the primary, the primary purpose of the meeting is for the Christmas tree lighting. Now that Jenny said that she wasn't able to do it this year, they really want to step in and figure out what they can pull together in two weeks, so that's what we'll be going over if anybody wants to join us. Our next item that I wanted to update you on was the Service Pro. They've completed everything. They came in on, was it Thursday? I don't know what's today, Thursday's Thursday. They came in on Monday and finished, did all of the upstairs, so they spent another eight hours in the upstairs offices doing the same thing they had done downstairs. Over the weekend, L and R Cleaning came in and did all of the rugs, so we have sanitized and clean everything from top to bottom. You're going to see on the agenda that we next need to talk about a rodent issue we have in the building, so that's on the agenda.
Okay.
We have been working diligently, trying to find the Boston Post cane recipient. We have finally narrowed down who it's going to be. We've been in communication with the family of said individual, and per their request and our previous conversations, we're scheduling that for November 21st, it's Saturday, at 12:30. It's better during the day. I'm going to reach out to her tomorrow and we're going to let her invite people, so we're going to ask, we're going to ask that it be by invitation only. She's been given a number, we're going to try to stick around 20, 20 people, 25 people, plus the Selectmen that will be here, so that still keeps us within our guidelines. We'll film it and we'll play it for the residents, but we're going to ask that it be by invitation only. If that's okay with you guys? What are you looking at?
This is a good screen.
Something up there?
It's okay.
Is that good for that? I mean, it's the only way that we can make sure our whole family gets here or not.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Getting dated with just people that want to watch.
Yep.
Our next item is, I wanted to go over the Treasurer's email, and for some reason, the packet, it wasn't where I thought it was going to be. Do you have that, do you? All right, bear with me just a second. Do you guys have an email from the Treasurer?
Yep.
Yep.
First thing on the list.
Yeah, see? For some reason, we don't have the same packet. Can I take David's? Hey, all right. So just a couple of things, she sent you this email, or she sent me the email on the 9th. Her and I sat down and went over a few of them. We're only going to talk about a couple so that you're prepared for the next meeting that we're going to have. I've asked her to come on 25th, and that's going to include an executive session because we have a couple of workers' comp issues that we need to discuss. So the Maine aren't paid leave that she mentions, that's a new mandate that's going into place in January, nothing we need to talk about now, but she doesn't want you to be surprised when budget season comes. It's going to change, it's going to change what employees have the right to bank hours, and it's going to start including people like call firefighters that we hadn't budgeted on in the past, but she'll give you all the details of that. The next one was on the dams, and one of the other items that I was going to mention to you was that we did get the money back from Sanford and Emory Mills. Remember, we had overpaid and we had asked and asked and asked. We finally got the $4,681 from the Town Assembly of Sanford. But the Coalition has revised their budget and they've increased it by $3,512. So, the conversation that Michelle and I had was, do we want to present to the board asking them to use it out of the emergency fund and asking Warren and Finance to get together? Or do we just have them wait till next budget season and pay for it then? You know, in the effort to not sound, you know, let's see how I'm going to word this carefully. The, when did the work finish on Emory Mills Dam?
Last November.
Last November. So here we are a year later and we got the money that we overpaid them.
Right.
Right.
I really, Michelle and I's recommendation to you is that you wait and instead of using the Town of Acton's emergency fund, is that you budget for the miss fall, next budget season.
Now, this money that they're looking for now, this is on the 1920 budget?
It's on the, yes. But they've increased it mid-year, but they run on, their town meeting is coming up in March, just like Shapley's. We're the only one that runs on a fiscal year, they run on calendars.
I think we're just better off.
Sanford ran on a calendar, on a fiscal year.
I mean, that's what I was told anyways. I mean, I certainly could be mistaken, but.
At the last meeting, I asked Steve Buck, the town manager, and he said they run on of July.
They run, but so this, but this isn't part of their new budget. This is the current, they've increased it in the middle of the year.
Right, and I don't know why they increased it.
Yeah.
So, I mean, and you kind of read her comment, you know, that, that we can't, we can't keep having these increases mid-budget season. It's easier for Sanford because all it takes is a vote of the council, but for somebody like Acton or Shapley, we have to have a special town meeting. I mean, it's an emergency, and she, you know, she says it's burdensome on the little guy, so.
I don't see why we can't wait.
I don't, I mean, it took them a year to give us our refund.
We vote on it every year at town meetings, like we always do. I think probably, I, we don't, there's no big work going on down there, so it's not like the money's necessary at this point anyways.
Nope.
Okay. Pandemic policy is on the agenda, we're going to review that tonight. Minimum wage is going up 2% at the beginning of the year, she wanted to make sure that you knew that. Reimbursing the road accounts, this is something that we're going to put off until the 25th. We want to make sure that the road commissioners are involved, but essentially, now that we've turned them into independent contractors, we're pulling the money from workers' comp and insurance out of certain lines. She just wants to clean it up. Remember, we had talked about having a workshop? We're going to make that an agenda item and bring both of the guys in on the 25th, so we can wait on that. Audit report, she wanted to make sure that you saw, copies are in your box, she's also put it on the town's website. Undesignated fund balance was, is up to 1.6, so as we go into budget season, the auditors have always recommended, or based on our three months' worth of bills, it's 1.2, so you're going to have some money that you can move forward to offset taxes. She's mentioning the revaluation, it's time that Acton think about having a revaluation. We lasted it in 2006, it was 14 years ago, so I did reach out to Adonals and Associates. At this point, their next revale is 2023 that they're booking for. So I've asked John to set up a conference call where we can start looking at numbers and budget over the next three years, if we plan on that revale. Other housekeeping items, some maintenance that needs to be done there and that we'll go over on the 25th, and then, of course, the gym. We've got to figure out what we're doing there.
I thought we were winterizing, Ed was going to.
It's going to shut down.
Yeah.
It's shut down.
I found the water shut off tonight.
Perfect.
The water's shut off. This weekend, I'm going to be winterizing it.
And we have, we've reached out, I mean, there shouldn't be any more oil deliveries or.
No, I wouldn't put anything, no.
No.
No, we don't have the money for it anyway. All we have the money for is electricity.
Right.
Right, okay.
Unless you can turn the oil into electricity, it ain't happening.
Not today. Not enough today.
That's taken care of.
Nope, so it'll be all shut down and winterized, so. Do I, I do need a couple of gallons of non-toxic antifreeze.
Non-toxic antifreeze?
Yeah, can I, can I just get that at, at Springville Hardwear, on the town's account?
Um, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have petty cash and.
Can I just, will they allow me to sign for that?
That's what I was thinking of in my mind, but I was.
It did when I was on the fire department, you know, fire chief.
Yeah, I feel like they will. If you have a problem, just call them, but you should.
Yeah, I'll call you. Call them ahead of time, I'll be in tomorrow.
You usually don't put Selectmen on there because they come and go, so we.
Yeah, no, it's understandable, so.
Yeah, you should be fine.
I just need a gallon or two, so.
Worst case, pay for it and I'll pay you out of petty cash.
Yeah.
I've got a couple gallons at the house if you want it.
Okay.
Okay, so, the next item, building maintenance budget, very quickly. This is based on some of our things that we weren't planning on with the pandemic and the cleaning. You can see that this is coming down a little quicker than we, than we had hoped, so Michelle is just passing this along to make sure that you're keeping a close eye on it, certainly we are. Current balance is 18, 9 and change. She's got some outstanding bills listed there, the cleaning that we do, the trash pickup, the shoveling that we expect, the lawn care, the things that we've already budgeted for. When all that's said and done, we're at about 7,900, so that's one furnace away from a special town meeting, so we want to keep an eye on that line closely.
Yep.
Just an FYI for the record, that you did get thank you letters from Maine, Southern Maine Veteran Cemetery in Springvale, Lifelight, they sent you all that, put them in the box. They're thanking you for the town's donations. We send them their payments after taxes, so that's why we're just getting the letters. Told you about the audit. Town report, now that we, the audit is done, town report will be out next week. Made the executive decision, only order 100. Every, with the last, how many years we've ordered 500? Boxes unopened, boxes and boxes, so we'll order 100 and see what happens. Our last item was Canal Bridge. Kim wasn't here last week, and you guys did have a conversation with road commissioner about having him have a conversation with the people in New Hampshire and kind of getting the steps started. Kim kind of has a different idea on that, so I just wanted to have a roundtable discussion about where that's going.
Well, I don't know if I have a different idea, but I guess, well, no, what did you guys talk about? Like, what's, what's going on, I guess?
David, David instructed him to reach out to DEP and start looking into permits and the plan that Acton was going to do their side themselves, and started getting permits and numbers and things like that. As I understood from our conversation, you liked the idea of, why don't we just let New Hampshire handle it? It's going to be, you know, he's getting into a new position and working fresh, let's just pay them to handle the whole thing, it may be cleaner. That's what I got when we went and spoke.
And I just, I didn't know about that. I mean, we had talked a little bit about it when, when the gentleman came to speak to us. I know Ed's liked the sound of it at that time, but I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I didn't really understand, you know, what was going on and how you guys felt.
I don't want to cheat our road commissioners out of anything, but they're pretty busy and doing everything they're doing.
I don't either, I.
The New Hampshire guys seem to have a handle on the whole thing and maybe they could work with them, but.
I guess my other concern is, is will this road commissioner that's, that's getting started, is he just going to get halfway through it and not be there? What, what happens then? I guess that was, you know how we have an election coming up and stuff?
Yeah, but I mean, I don't believe that we're going to be in the position to be starting up until our election anyways. I mean, we have to go to town meeting. I just, I feel that it's.
I understand, given the work to them, I.
It's better, for the Town of Acton, having us do our side, we're Town Acton, landowners that would be working on their properties, we've got private roads that we have to deal with. I don't know if these guys are, and not saying they don't know what they're doing, but.
Right.
I mean, I've worked with a bunch of municipalities and most of them are not highway building crews. They're, they batch bottles, they ditch roads. So, myself, and I would like to think that we can have, we'll have a little bit more oversight on the project if we are doing our side. I just feel that for, say, one of us to go up there and do the oversight or the other road commissioner to watch somebody else do the project, I just, I just, I just don't feel right about that.
Okay.
And of course, at the same time, whoever runs the road commissioner at that point in time may want to do that project.
Right.
So, what we did was last week, we, we discussed with Adam, and of course, I did talk to Adam, he has contacted the road commissioner over Wakefield and stuff, so, but, you know, to go out, start looking into the permit process, see what we're going to need, because either way.
Okay, so he has.
Permits have to be done, it doesn't matter who's doing it.
Right.
So, I just think it's probably.
I would just, I just want to make sure that this moves along, I mean.
Yeah.
Instead of dragging our feet or, I mean, I don't want to jump into it and make mistakes or anything, but I guess, you know, as time goes on, things get more expensive.
Well, what we've done is I also asked them to come up with some numbers.
Okay, good.
Because Charlie's numbers, I don't believe are anywhere near in line to what, because they're, it's not apples and apples, those guys have an actual municipality, so they're paying, they buy their equipment and they're not adding. So, we asked Adam to come up with some numbers.
Okay.
And something that we can propose to the finance committee and to the Town of Acton at town floor and make sure that we're, you know, we're good with it. So, that's, that's what we talked about last week, wasn't it, Ed?
Right, well, that, that sounds good. I was just kind of wondering where we're at, what you were doing. And I, did you say we were going to be meeting with the road commissioners?
We're going in the 25th when the Treasurer comes to the meeting.
I guess if I had any questions, then, you know, I just, you know.
I'll make sure to prepare for that as well.
All right.
Uh, ba, 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 that's it for me.
That's it for you, all right. I think we all signed the warrants and bills?
Yep.
All right, I need a motion to approve the agenda, maybe?
Do you mind swapping A and B under new business?
Oh, you want me to, yes. Yep, we do need to swap A for B tonight, under new business.
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll second that.
With the exception of swapping A and B under new business.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Minutes of the last meeting. It's one of you gentlemen.
Make a motion, we accept the minutes of the last meet, for October 28th.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? All opposed? Okay. Department heads, committee chairs, do we have anybody? Okay.
We're a landlord, district warrant, road commissioner. Last Thursday, Friday, Monday, we'd be out and put up the wood of sand. Put up about 1,250 yards, so we're all set for a little time, and they, we got some old salt trucked in today, so we're, we're all set for a good chunk of time, so. And then also Tuesday this week, we had a snow and ice management class, and maybe took a little bit of stuff away from it, so. We're going to be having, going to talk about some things, maybe we can talk about, we have a couple of time, you know, we're down the road and then we'll, we'll go from there, so.
Sounds good, thanks.
Lieutenant Lamb, road commissioner chair. We did have a snow and ice class while Paul was here, the instructor. I did ask him about RSMS, and Paul and I are having some difficulty maneuvering with, through the program. He's very familiar with it, he's happy to come in and do a training with that. He won't be available until probably early December, but I just wanted to let, let you know that.
Perfect.
Let him know to get the, get the ball rolling as far as scheduling it, and he'll come in and teach us how to do it.
Perfect. Be nice if somebody would have replied some time ago. Oh no, we had the wrong person all along, the wrong person at, at the state.
All right, we got some answers, so that's good. All right, anybody else? I guess we're going to move on to old business. A, Article 43, application form.
So, hoping that the board will vote to support a couple of, really one minor change on the application, and this is per the, for the Treasurer, and one of our applications last week that didn't have a 1099. So I've taken the heading off the top, just to give, to allow for more space, there's really no reason for that up there. But the line has been added, it says additionally, a completed W-9 must be included with this application packet regardless of whether or not the road association has previously been awarded funds. Should like to see it become part of the packet because, again, we went through the whole process with one of them.
Went through all that, yep.
Yep.
And it didn't have a tax ID number. It looks like they may, but it, it needs to be part of the packet.
Okay.
So, if you're okay with that, that's the only change. I don't know if you want it to go before the road committee, it's more of a.
I think it's something we need, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, Michelle would.
Time.
All right, so make a motion to approve it as amended?
I'll make a motion to approve the Article 43 application as amended.
Second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Everybody, yeah, everybody, all in favor? All opposed? Okay.
So I'll send you a copy, Leslie, and we'll get it updated on the website.
All right. B, award loan bid.
So, as you know, we opened the loan bids for the tanker truck two weeks ago. We turned over the bids to the Treasurer so that she could compare everything. It looks like the lowest interest rate, which was 1.49% from Kennybunk Savings, is in the best interest of the town. It's got obviously the least amount of interest, but based on the 60 months, we went through the fine print of all of the applications. Some of them had early payoff penalties, there was some administration fees in them, so she's calculated all that out, but it didn't, can see the bottom notes. One, two, and four require the town to pay legal fees, one and two charge commitment fees, one has a prepayment penalty fee, but even based on what those numbers were, it's still lower to keep the 1.49 compared to partners at 2.5. So it is her recommendation, which I think you saw in an email, that you award the loan bid to Kennybunk Savings. And I have this nice big file, if you want to review anything from two weeks ago.
Do we need a motion on this?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. I guess we need a motion.
I'll make a motion, we award the loan proposal to Kennybunk Savings Bank.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? All opposed?
I'm going to send you a promise letter from the closing is scheduled, all the, you know, the initial that, over the 1.49.
It's like a 10 or 11,000 dollar savings, so it's.
Yeah, 12,592.
There you go.
We can go to C, the pandemic policy.
So this is something that Maine Municipal has recommended that we put into place for the last 30 days or so. We've been working hard at finding neighboring municipalities pandemic policy, and one of the challenges that we've had with this policy is keeping up with the Maine CDC and keeping up with the governor's executive orders, because we needed to make sure that, that the wording in there was, was correct, so that if the states changed that have to quarantine or don't have to quarantine, that that falls into place with the employees and that we weren't having to change it day by day. So this is a policy that you guys received a couple of weeks ago. We've been in the process of reviewing it. Legal has reviewed it. The only change since your last email is going to be on page, the fourth page, travel outside of the state of Maine. So it just says, at the time of this policy exempt states per the Maine Governor's executive order are New Hampshire and Vermont. Originally, I think New Jersey and New York were listed, but they've now been put back on the list, so that change came out. I didn't hear that any of you had changes. Most of this is governed by HIPAA and CDC and the state, so there's not a lot of whizzle room, but, did you have any other thoughts on it?
Nope.
No, it looked good.
Make a motion that we accept the pandemic policy.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? All opposed?
So if you all have copies, you can just sign one and take that and use that as a master, please.
Okay, I'll pull mine out. All right, we're going to move on to new business, and we've switched B for A, so we're going to start with Goat Hill.
So, Paul Davis is here, and there's a document, I'm looking for Kennybunk Savings, there's a document inside your packet, a sketch that he wanted to look at in advance. If he is here, he'll talk to you about ADA compliance at the parking lot, correct?
Did you just have a look at the sketch?
They did, they got it, yes.
Sorry.
Yeah, just an update to you on the trail. Don's spoken, Kennybunk Trails is now, half of the trail is ADA compliant. So the next step, he's on, he's continuing to work on it too, but half of it is done. And now we need ADA compliant parking spaces, which, if you have a van with a lift, you need 18 feet of width per space. Thoughts on that was it probably should be two spaces, so you're talking 36 feet, and logically you would put them fairly close to the trail head. And in doing that, obviously, you take out quite a bit of parking. So, the proposed idea is to increase the parking lot further back, regular parking, there'd still be some regular parking out front, obviously, but to increase it so there would be some additional parking in the back. We have grant funding to do this, it won't cost the town anything. We have grant funding to do this, it won't cost the town anything.
How many parking spaces do you have up there now?
Well, all depends on people park.
Right, I know, there's kind of...
They park pretty funky up there. We may actually put some lines in there.
Put something, yeah.
So that it's a little more organized. There should be 10 parking spaces here. Very seldom, the way people park, does it ever end up, I've seen, I think, eight in there. I think if people park, you know, in an organized fashion, probably could get 10. Certainly can get eight. And when you take out these, the 36 feet there, you're probably going to get down to...
Maybe seven? Yeah, because you need that spot for the ramp to come out.
So one of the issues when we originally got the permit for the parking was that, you know, went through the site review with the planning board, and one of their issues was that they didn't want to be parking out on the street. And what I've seen with the use it gets, if you don't increase it some, we're going to end up with people out on the street.
Street, right.
Especially on fall weekends and, you know, certain times of the year.
It's beautiful up there.
What's that?
I said it's beautiful up there, it's such a nice spot. People seem to like to go up.
I don't see a problem, as long as it's not going to cost the town anything.
No?
Yeah.
I think it's a good idea.
So.
Yeah, I think it'll be better if it's...
Yeah. I figure that was up there at some point, late summer. And, yeah, the parking's kind of snug up there, so, yeah, this will definitely be a help. It's quite nice, done a great job up there. Thank you.
What do you plan on going in or out?
In.
Right, further back, right?
Into the hill.
I mean, it was very limited by ledge there.
Yeah.
There is some ledge on this back corner here, and there's quite a bit of ledge right up in here. Yeah. Seen up there, it's pretty rocky ledge.
Oh, yeah.
I think we can go back to 30 feet, and hopefully we can get the 60 feet of width. That's the questionable one, whether we can get the 60 feet because of ledge.
Right. Well, hopefully it works out.
So let's do an official motion to support Goat Hill moving forward, assuming it doesn't encumber the town in any financial... So we have it on record, and he's got the authority to move forward.
Yep.
Make a motion that we support the Goat Hill, as long as there are any financial costs to the town of Acton.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? All opposed? Thank you.
For the ADA parking lot.
All right.
The original grant specified that he had to come before you for each thing, so we want to make sure that we have records that show that and support it, because we eventually have to send them to Doug at the state, so that's why those motions matter, so.
Okay.
Okay. Have a good night.
All right. So we're going to do the COLIC grant application next.
Okay, so this is, this has got a lot of interest, so I just want to make sure the board is on the, understands how we got to where we are. So on Tuesday, when there was a snow and ice class that the road committee chair attended, she brought me an application that the town road committee had put together with the help of the road commissioner, I'm assuming with his support. So she brought it to me on Tuesday and asked me to put it on this week's agenda, so we got it on Tuesday so that she could review it and possibly sign it. This is the same grant, and Leslie, you may want to come up, this is the same grant that the town of Acton applied for a year, two years ago?
Year ago.
Last year.
Last year. They applied for the grant last year, as I understand it, it's exact same culvert size, it is bigger, and that's what's caused a lot of the concerns that you have tonight. But we'll let Will and Leslie go over the grant with you first. I will tell you, in your packet, you have a spreadsheet on top that shows each name, name and address, whether it be Acton or Shapley, because some of the Shapleys were right on the border. Of everybody that sent you a concern regarding this, all of the emails are in there. Since printing it, we did receive three new ones, I've got the names and emails here, if that's something that you want to review. But if they're not in the packet, that's because they came in between 5:30 and 6:00, and we had already put the packets together. So why don't you start by telling them a little bit about the grant application, and then if the board wishes, from the public.
This money, I believe, is coming from the transportation bond that was voted on by the whole state of Maine. It is being, part of that money was allocated for stream crossing upgrades. And we, this, I think, is the third round of grants. We applied last year, we ended up hiring an engineering firm to do a sketch plan, because none of us have the expertise to do that type of planning. So we hired someone to do it. We didn't get the grant last time, there was some things that weren't put in the application that would have increased our score, that we went through and did this time. Right now, the culvert right now is a 10 point, 10 and a half foot diameter round culvert. We're proposing on the sketch plan to replace it with an eight-foot by 16-foot box culvert. Slip lining is not an option, because the permitting on that wouldn't come through. The state, you know, is frowning on slip lining, so that's not an option. And the road committee, you know, feels that this is an important thing to do, because the state is offering 125,000. In fact, this project is projected to cost about 200 grand. So we would only be responsible for approximately 75,000. The concern is if that culvert fails, over 100 homes would be cut off from fire yesterday. You know, someone could lose their life. Ambulance couldn't get over, somebody's house could burn down if the fire department wasn't able to get there because the culvert failed. And the culvert is in pretty bad condition. I understand, you know, people are, you know, concerned about increasing the culvert. Actually, what we're proposing is going from a 10 and a half foot high round culvert to an eight-foot high culvert. So it's actually lowering it.
The height, but not the width?
The height, but the width would be?
Yeah, the width has to be increased, because according to stream crossings, it has to be wider than the stream itself. Wildlife has to be able to walk through. It's not just about fish, it's about wildlife, you know, turtles have been able to go through.
So one of the questions I asked her, and just trying to be proactive from the other side, so if, so first of all, even if the board chooses to sign it, even though you have a lot, a lot of people that are going to give you a lot of reasons they don't want you to sign it, but you would have to still get approved, and then the difference of the money would still have to go to a town meeting to get approved.
Right.
Correct? It's not something that would come out of somebody's budget, it would be a separate warrant article that the voters would have to vote on. So let's make that clear, we're very early in the stages.
And also, even if we did get the grant, we do not have to accept the money. We're not tied into accepting the money if they award it to us.
Right.
They would come back, and then it would be, we'd have to sign contracts and all of that.
Right, and there's no penalty if we don't accept it, I know you talked about that before, so...
And it's the same thing.
Okay.
So one of the things that I continue here, as I'm reading through this, is could, and this may be more of a question for the road, for Will, I don't know if you want to join, but could the culvert that's there, if it has to be replaced, and everybody agrees it has to be replaced, and I'm not sure that they do, but could you replace it with the exact same size that's already there?
Uh, no, like, was they explaining, they have that box culvert, because the wildlife, like, on our sketch plan...
So no, I mean, no meaning who's going to...
Like, the DEP and...
And Army Corps of Engineers, they all have to, they all have to permit it.
So we can't get, so that was, so we can't get our permit to replace that unless we go with that style culvert, because that's to have all natural bottom, I'll do something for the fish, turtles, you know, whatever is in that lake needs to be able to just flow through there. And on the sketch plan, on the sketch plan that the engineer did for us, it shows the old round culvert, shows the new one, and it has all natural bottom, stone, all that stuff that would require us to have with that culvert in.
So I guess I'd be interested in hearing from, if everybody agrees that the culvert at some point needs to be replaced, and maybe they don't, I mean, what is the other option for the town of Acton if we have no control over the size of it? Or is that, I mean, is that accurate?
I dealt with DEP when we did the dam up on Wilson, and when I dealt with, I believe it was Chris Copie at the time. We, I was told that I could replace the culvert with the same culvert that I took out, as long as I didn't exceed 30%. So...
So you believe it's going to be done the same way? You believe it could be done the exact same way it is now?
Well, myself, I, I've got all kinds of concerns, I mean, myself, I believe that it's over state water, and inland fisheries put a boat launch on the other side of it, and now we're responsible for taking care of something so they can get their people through. So, but that's another point to be made later, I guess.
How long ago was it that you did that up there?
Well, the new boat launch is only, what, eight years old, maybe? Eight, nine years old, something like that.
Leslie, what were you saying about inland fisheries, I know I saw in one of these emails, that they support or don't support this?
They, they know that, they agree that the culvert needs to be replaced. They would prefer to see a larger culvert.
Than the proposed one, do they know that the residents already don't want that big?
They did see the sketch plan. They would prefer to see it, but, I mean, that's not...
And inland fisheries wants a bigger, what, just for their own personal reasons?
Well, inland fisheries is going to want as big as they can get it so they can get the pontoon boats through. Right now, right now, you can only get regular boats, I mean, not even regular boats, I mean, I went through there once with my bass boat, and that was a hairy experience.
I mean, that's not what this is about.
No.
Putting the culvert in to get more boats in there, I mean, you know...
And that's what, I mean, everybody is...
Exactly how protecting the fish.
Yeah, they definitely don't want that.
And what we're proposing will make it easier for the fish.
Most every email that I have here, and, you know, is the biggest concern is I do not support the enlargement of the culvert. I mean, I'm seeing that exact line pretty much in every single one of them, so consequently, I do not support the enlargement. So I'm not sure that they don't support the replacement of it, they just don't want it any larger, so. I mean, I guess I would wonder what would happen if we got something in writing from DEP or these people and said, listen, you know, if they're willing to give you something in writing saying that they will never permit it the same size, then we maybe bring the residents in a roundtable discussion and say, okay, now what? Because you live on that road.
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't care either way, whether or not it's larger or smaller, I mean, I don't, you know, there's so many different opinions on it. The only issue I've got with it was kind of brought, you know, the concerns were brought up. I don't know how many people called, and there was a couple very valid points made was, when you get into a project of this magnitude, when you get DEP and inland fisheries and everybody else involved in the state, none of the homeowners, land butters have been notified from what I'm getting out of this.
No, they haven't, and it's not, I mean, and it's not past practice, I mean, it's, the agenda items and town approval money, I mean, there's nothing that says in a warrant article that they have to be part of the grant process, I mean...
Well, you do when you have homeowners that own both sides of that road that have to be, when the culvert gets larger and you're impeding onto their property, that becomes an issue.
And the other two board members don't, probably don't know about this yet, but literally at five minutes of six, and I'm guessing it was the same woman that started the email that you referenced, that said, do not even consider, what was she saying? I think that was the one...
She did apologize for that.
So I think that, you want to tell them about that phone conversation, because I don't think they get about that.
So, I forget the lady's name, she called, she was calling from California, but the conversation I had, she owns both sides of that road on the incoming head north.
Jody Good.
Um, Good.
Good.
And back when they had done the original culvert, I guess there was issues then. And from the conversation I had, I believe that we're going to have to do a little bit of homework and a little bit of, um... We've got to make sure we contact these landowners, make sure that we got their blessings, because other than that, I don't, I don't believe it would be in the town's best interest to jump into this until we know, because it may not be good.
And this, well, at this point, I can't contact DEP, because while the grant application is open...
Yeah.
They can't speak to anybody. Anything, any questions have to go through email. The grant closes at, on Monday, so we have until Monday, if we're going to apply for this money, to send that in.
But the problem I've got with it is, with these landowners that are buttoning this bridge, they're not for this at all. And so the problem is, when you have a project of this magnitude, this isn't like just replacing a culvert across the road, because anytime you do that, and I know this for a fact, I've done this long enough, that when I change a culvert in a road, I can only put that culvert in for where it was. I cannot change the location of that culvert. I know that, that's law. If I change that location of that culvert, then I'm talking drainage easements and everything else. Now, the problem is with that section of road up there, there's only a small right of way up through there. So when you increase the size of that culvert, you're doubling, well, not quite doubling the width of it, okay? You're now impeding onto that easement. So until we know we've got the easement to do that, and these people sign off on it, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I don't feel it's a good idea. I mean, it's a great idea, as long as we've got, we just missed some steps first.
Is this a grant application that generally comes around once a year?
No.
No. Well, it came around this time last year, because we know we applied for it.
That more money will be coming down the road.
Right.
But wouldn't we rather have the involvement of the residents and have it be inexpensive to taxpayers, if that's what the decision they go in? If, you know, at least have them involved?
It's, well, I mean, they will, they will have involvement, because we don't have it, you know, it's not being funded 100%, so there will be input. We're not obligated to take the money if we get it, but if we don't apply, we won't get it. That'll be 125,000 dollars that the residents of Acton would have to pay, that...
Where was, where did, where did they come up with the 200,000 dollar number?
That was estimates from...
Was it the engineer?
Engineer last year.
Yep.
And then I talked to Will, and he said we should bump it up probably about 5% for increase in prices. That's how we came up with the 200,000. So last year, it was, the engineer booked it at 187.
And if we did go forward with it, and the residents are not happy, and we cannot get what we need, then the money goes back.
Money goes back.
I mean, it's not like if...
Going forward with something that we missed too many steps first. And we've done this before in the past, where, like, the town shed, we did the town shed, I use that for an example, because it was a good learning experience. But we went out and, okay, we approved this money, and then we got prices on the job after the fact, and it didn't work out that way.
200 to me, so...
But wouldn't you, when you, we would be having to go to the townspeople to ask, I mean, that's when, okay, we got this grant, okay, we have this much money. Now we go and we get our estimates, and then we know exactly how much we have when we go to the townspeople. I mean, I don't know, I, you know, I just...
It's not the cost that I'm worried about. I'm worried about the legality of what we're doing first.
Right.
If we apply for a grant without going to the homeowners, the landowners, and getting their blessings, and make sure that we're all set with easements and everything else, then we're wasting...
Have we ever done that? I feel like we have not, we've done this before with grants, and we've never...
Kind of replaced a major culvert.
And when they did that back in the day, and I did speak with this lady that does own this, and Angus King was involved, okay, in this process. This was a big deal.
Right.
That's why I'm bringing this up, because the big deal it was back then, now they're turning around wanting to make it larger, and with the response that we just got in the last 24 hours, I want to make sure our ducks are in our own or not.
Yeah, I got to agree. I mean, I appreciate all the work you did in the application and whatnot, but I, with the, I forget how many emails and calls we got, it's in excess of 30. I think we need to set back a little bit and...
I think a lot of those emails too were misleading.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, but, you know, I, hopefully, people who came tonight understand, you know, what you're doing, why the culvert, you know, needs to be that size, and the state didn't get a hold of us to do this, to put a bigger culvert in. the state didn't get ahold of us to do this, to put a bigger culvert in, to have, you know, more boats and different things like that out there. That's not what this is about. There was a lot of misunderstanding.
Well, there was definitely the piece that a lot of people, for whatever reason, thought that the state approached us, but even if you take that piece out of it, ninety-five percent of the people in here are concerned with the size of the culvert.
And I understand that.
At the end of the day, it is going to increase.
Right.
I mean, we've been thinking about this in road committee meetings for two years now.
I know, I know.
I mean, it's not like this is a surprise.
No, I know we've been working on it.
And I understand that. The only problem is, is when you make a sketch up, and, you know, you're increasing the size of it, you're now encumbered on this, on more property, but you're literally taking somebody's property at that point, um, one way or another. Um, that was one of the first steps we, and, and I, and I never mentioned this, because I never really put two and two together, they were gonna expand it that much bigger. Um, I was under the impression back in the day that we were gonna pretty much do the same thing, but now I know they wanna do the thingal dang or whatever, but...
The sketch plan is that, this one is exactly the same one that, that was submitted last year.
Last year, right, nothing's changed.
And, uh...
Exactly the same.
And we all voted to go forward. I feel bad that you've done all this work when we've all...
I, my concern is if the culvert fails, and we have residents on the other side of that culvert that are elderly, um, I know someone that needed an ambulance last week outside of the culvert.
Do we have the rating on that? Do we...
It's, I think, it, right around fifty-six.
Okay.
So it's not that bad.
Okay, so...
Not bad?
No.
What is the range?
The, the bridge down to Milton Mills is what, thirty?
Right.
The, twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, so, okay.
They're still driving over it.
All right, so that's...
I'd be more concerned if this was a bridge versus a culvert.
Well, and, you know, when we did this, there's more, you know, that's my problem on my side, Tom. Now, bridges are over there, so we have the chance to do it, because they're all...
Oh, no, and, and it's understandable, Will.
I was just saying, you know, we have the chance to do it, so, you know, we...
Right, the grant was, exactly.
The, the money's not available for the bridges, it is for the culvert.
Right.
That's, that's why we did...
It's, it's not that I don't, I, 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 I think it's a great idea, I think the intentions are great, I just, with the last twenty-four hours of the information that's come in, I just think it's, we're, we may be jumping the gun a little bit on this because of the concerns that I, you know, that's come forward. And, um, because, like I said before, you, you, when you get into a job that big, you, you really have to get in touch with the, uh, the property owners, and come to find out, the, that property owner at that point had, uh, the grandfather had given that prop, an easement through there only. And, um, whether or not we can maintain that easement, I don't know, and we really ought to look into that.
Yeah.
And I don't wanna waste our time having them approve it, or taking away from somebody else who might be able to get it, if we're not gonna be able to do it. That's the only concern I got.
But if, if, if we don't accept it, then it would just go to the next person down the list.
Okay.
It wouldn't be lost money to anybody.
Yeah, I'm betwixt and between. I'd like to apply for the grant, but I fully understand all the property owners and their, and their concerns.
I mean, I had, I had one property on a call last night, and they wanted to put together a fund and do it themselves, you know, and I'd like, you can't do that, because it's a town road.
They want it the same size?
What's that?
Because they want it the same size?
They don't want it enlarged.
They don't want it enlarged. And that's, I mean, so just because if they don't, if you decide not to apply for the grant, which sounds like it's the majority of, of you guys, well, it doesn't mean that you can't put it on a further agenda item after the holidays and start talking about, you know, what it might look like to keep it the same size, and, um, you know, it...
How do we...
Once Monday, uh, goes, we can, we can get...
No, I know.
...answers from DEP, um, as to, you know, what they would permit and what they wouldn't.
Oh, so we don't know that? So that wasn't a, would we, I thought you said that...
With, with the, um, string crossing classes and the grant class that I took, um, there, there's certain qualifications that need to, that need to...
So it was for the sake of the grant that it got enlarged, or that they wouldn't permit it at all? That was what...
They would not, they would not permit a slip line. Um, if it's not one-point-two bankful width, they won't permit it. Um, and that's, you know, what we were told in class.
I mean, you're in a tough position, I mean, because, you know, at the end of the day, you were elected by the people, and you've got, you know, forty, fifty people that have reached out to the local...
Yeah, I wanna listen to the people, I'm, yeah.
That's their wish.
I mean, worst-case scenario, we foot the bill ourselves. I mean, it's, yeah, it's money.
If we, if we turn around, and I, I've been dealing with DEP and all these people for a long time, and I know they're, they're trying to push these box culverts and all that, but they told us, me and Scott, when we were a road commissioner, that we are exempt when we put a culvert in, okay, or we have to permit by rule because we're a municipality, and that we could put back whatever we took out as long as we didn't increase it thirty percent. Now, whether or not they've changed the law in the state, I mean, I don't believe they have.
Right.
But I, you know, if that's the case, the worst part of that job is just stopping the water going back and forth, putting back what we got.
Right.
And Foglio did that job years ago, and I can guarantee it didn't cost two-hundred-thousand dollars then. Um, obviously with inflation and everything else.
Right.
Um, but, either way, the size of the culvert right now, I'm not concerned about. I'm concerned about the steps we have to take before we go forward with this. Okay?
Um, it's obvious a pontoon boat doesn't fit through that culvert that's there now.
Yeah, and it wouldn't, with the proposed culvert that we're putting...
Right, and there's pontoon boats on square pond. So they're getting in...
But actually, actually, we're lowering...
So they're getting in, they're getting onto the lake somehow.
Right.
There must be another, you know, another, yeah, another place, someplace.
Yeah, there must be.
So...
We're lowering the height of it from ten...
Right, so it's gonna go...
Down to eight.
Right.
Okay.
Now, is that eight to the high water mark, or eight to the bottom?
That's from the bottom.
From the bottom, okay. And how much water flows through there?
I don't know.
You don't know if it's a foot, or two foot, or three foot? Okay.
I don't know.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not an engineer, that's why we had to hire somebody to do it.
No, it's fine, I was just curious, so, okay. Yeah, I'm in line to hold off for now, and, much as I'd like to get the money, but I think we got a bunch of steps to go through, and hopefully they'll offer the money again next year.
But if you decide not to, then the road committee will look at, um, contact DEP, find out what would be permitted and what wouldn't.
Exactly. Once, once the, once the, once the, the time drops on this, then, yeah, definitely find out what, yeah, what's the bare minimum, minimum we could put in there.
And if, if they open up another grant?
Yep, we'll go from there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I guess, so it sounds like there's not gonna be a motion, so I don't know if, so, I, I wouldn't imagine anybody really would have anything to...
Well, I think we just make a motion that we don't sign the grant application at this time, based on the input, and, I'll make a motion that we don't sign the grant application at this time, based on the input from the public, and the fact that we just need more information.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor? All opposed?
Can you vote in opposed?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All righty.
So, definitely they don't want comment until public comment at the end.
Yeah, so, will we be getting some kind of notifications if you decide to move forward? Because we have one of the abudders on the coal side.
You wanna, you're now a public comment?
At this point in time, I think...
We're not going forward, they just...
He's asking if you decide, if you decide to ever, is he gonna be, are they gonna be notified as a abudder?
Well, I think they'd have to be.
Right, if it goes forward, then we have to.
One of the reasons why, you know, I, you know, I'm, I can't...
Sounds like they're telling you yes, is what I'm hearing.
Yeah, so, it would, it would...
Right.
We just don't know about this ourselves.
I just, we haven't gotten to that step yet in this process. We were just working on a grant, and then if the grant had gone through, then, then we would've started doing that, but...
They're asking to be notified before the grant process, at the next, really with any communications regarding it, is what they're asking.
I, I think probably, um, what we'd have to do is make sure that, uh, somebody from the road committee, uh, they'd, it'd be the one discussing it, not us.
Right.
Somebody from the road committee would have to, um...
Get a list of all the abudders?
At least let our town administrator contact them.
Okay.
Not, not themselves, but the town administrator to do that.
Yep.
Of course.
Be great.
Okay, so it sounds like I'll be contacting, I've got a list of anybody that sent me an email, or if you guys could narrow that down to maybe five major contacts, um, as Leslie and her committee discussed, she notifies me, and I will share the love.
Thank you, everybody for coming. Um, all right, we're gonna move on to see rabies clinic.
So we have our animal control officer, Mr. Driscoll here, uh, we have been communicating some via email. He had the great idea of possibly having a rabies clinic in Acton, um, so we communicated on what that might look like under the COVID standards. Uh, he sent me an email that, um, I sent to you guys just to kind of talk about it. Um, the thoughts that, that we had was possibly having it outside in the parking lot, um, you know, we can, we can manage it and arrange it so that only so many people are out of their cars, and maybe when the car comes in, they're given a number, so that only, you know, one or two people are in the parking lot at the same time. Uh, there's certainly a big need for it, and the idea is that if we can do it at the town hall parking lot, um, that we could register the dogs at the same time, because that's a, you know, big problem that we have, um, is remembering to do that. So, um, just wanted to put it in front of you and kind of see what your thoughts were. Um, he offered to reach out to the active vet, to see if it was something that she was interested in participating in, but certainly, um, he wanted to get your opinion first.
That's what they do with the vets, you pull in and...
Yep.
They come out, they get the animal, and you wait, then they bring it back.
We, without a doubt, could organize it.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
Yeah, I do, too.
Yep.
Did we cover everything, Jim? Do you wanna come up?
What about possibly picking, full cup, it may not be able to, with my car, um, I don't know if that's a problem or...
So, one of the things, um, that he had offered, because he's, you know, out of all, out of the animal control officers that we've had, he's gone above and beyond and, and continues to do that in this position, um, the question came up is, what would the liability, if any, be as far as helping people transport, um, animals and themselves? And one of the things that, that I thought about after he and I spoke, and I haven't shared this with him yet, is possibly picking up the animal and taking the animal up, it'd be no different if he was taking an animal to the, the shelter or somewhere else, and maybe not having the person trans, ride with you. That might lower the liability, because he's allowed to take animals from A, B, C, anywhere, covered as a, in his position. I'm not a hundred percent sure if, you know, if the elderly can ride with him where the liability is, we could look into that, but...
A folk with special nature, you know?
Right.
Something to do with that. I'm sure there's not that many, but...
Yeah, it's, it's something to offer, definitely.
To reach out, you know?
Yep. So we could get an opinion, or we could just authorize it, I mean...
Well, I think, one thing, uh, Jim, you might wanna do is check...
Yeah. I need to get my nap to bed, so...
Me neither. Um, I think maybe one thing you might wanna do is make sure you check your insurance, make sure you're covered.
So he'd actually be covered under us as a town employee?
But still, you, you still wanna make sure you're covered on that end of it, and, um, I think it's a good idea. I mean, uh...
I do, too.
Yeah.
I think there's probably a big need for it.
So, how are you working out, Jeff, with...
So, I mean, I guess the first thing would be to check, check with Jessica, see if it works for her, we can set a date, um, it'd be nice to do it before the snow flies. License is really expired the thirty-first, so we'll organize it, and if we have a couple of staff members there, essentially, as cars pull in, we'll have somebody running different stations, um, and as cars pull in, we'll give them a number, and, you know, we'll just bring one or two out in the parking lot at a time, so that, you know, we're not having an issue with the animals, not having an issue with too many people. So when the cars come in, we give them a number, and when it's their turn, they come up, pay the fee, you know, get the dog the shot, register it, they're gone, you wish, you know, just keep the cycle going. Um, that's kind of how I envisioned it, but certainly, you know...
That sounds good.
Just a way to keep everything moving, um...
Corona, you know?
Yeah, right, I mean, we require masks and the whole six feet, and, you know, someone should know how we run the elections, just in and out process, if you push it all through, you know, I'm sure we can make it work.
Jess Burke's, she's...
Oh, yeah.
She's our contact.
Yep.
Now, if you get some volunteers, your wife, she might help that.
Yep, I'm sure she would, yeah.
And we would certainly, through our neighbors helping neighbors, if anybody wasn't able to financially afford the rabies shot, I'm sure that we could cover that to assist. Uh, we certainly don't want any elderly, and we've got a couple in town that, that struggle with it, but, um, you know, and it's unfortunate, because sometimes people will say, well, if you're struggling, maybe you shouldn't have the pet, but it's their only companion.
Right.
So, as you talk to people as well, if you find people that are, you know, might not be able to afford it...
Are those cats also, as women?
Yeah.
Cats, yeah.
As long as they're in a carrier.
Yeah.
Yep.
And if you need help, let me know, because I'll help.
All right.
Find everybody out.
Thank you.
See if she is okay with it, and let's pick a date.
Good. Thank you.
Um, while he's here, because I know he, he doesn't like public, you know, displays of appreciation, but, um, if you follow anything on Facebook in both towns, I mean, the town raves about the work that he's doing in this position and how appreciative they are.
Doing an amazing job, above and beyond.
Good for him, you know, from the board.
Yeah.
Yep.
We really, really appreciate it.
Yeah, I mean, we've been through...
A lot.
Four, three, four, and, yeah, you're top-notch, Jim. Appreciate it.
Yep. All righty. Okay, so D, modern pest service.
So I promised you with cleaning would come a modern pest problem. Apparently the town hall is infested with ladybugs and mice. Ladybugs, they have a different way of approaching, but apparently they can cause some sicknesses and illnesses, and they are recommended that we, we deal with it, but more importantly is that we, we are infested with the mice. So they've put together a plan. It's essentially, it was included in the budget process, the budget breakdown that the treasurer had given you. You're looking at about $1,700. It's a six, eight-month process. They're going to come around and block all these holes and do their thing. Details are all listed out in there, but, you know, short of the traps that we're constantly setting, I'm not, you know, I don't know what else.
You ever thought about having a cat, too? You ever thought about having a cat here?
Yeah, we talked about it.
I mean, seriously, come on.
Hey, I'm all about having a cat. We had a cat. We were feeding it.
Yeah.
It turned out to be a neighbor, so it got a little, but it would just keep, it kept coming in. I'd love to have a cat, but we have residents that could be allergic, so that would probably be wrong, but there are, I mean.
I mean, you know.
There are a lot of holes. I mean, it's an older building, but there are a lot of places. The gentleman had me walk the building with him, and, I mean, there was all kinds of entrance places, so just by stop, just by them starting by blocking them all is going to make a difference. But, yeah, I don't share all the details with you.
You can't block them all in this place.
No, I know, but there's a lot of mouth. But they can do things to, you know, lower the.
Please lower it.
You know, I mean, there shouldn't be, pardon my French.
We could get a hairless, we could get you one of those hairless cats.
Those are ugly.
I know. I know, but I'm just saying, nobody's allergic.
So, I mean, it's something, you know, we got to do. I mean, I've been here for 16 years. We've never done it before, so it's a small amount of money. So how about a motion to approve?
Make a motion. We signed the contract for modern pest services. Now, if I'm reading this right, what, first year, it's going to be, what, $1,868.94? But that's with a lot of other.
Yes.
Work that goes along with that.
So that's the annual, yeah, the annual cost to start, right. But we're only going to, you know, we're not signing a five-year agreement. We're going to try it for the year.
And the monthly, just the monthly fee is $120, and that's included in that number?
Correct, it's all included.
Yeah, yeah.
You made the motion?
I made a motion.
I'll second it.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor? All opposed?
The staff thinks you.
You're welcome.
Cheryl's tired of chasing mice out of the bathroom. And so are my residents. We'll lock them in there and wait for the next man to come in. I'm like, oh, excuse me, you got a minute?
All right. E, compactor rate.
So for the first time in many years, we have a road commissioner that has a compactor. I'm assuming that prior road commissioners had a different method of compacting dirt roads, but this particular road commissioner has a compactor. We don't have a compactor rate, so we reached out to our fine neighboring town of Chapeli, and they use the state rates. So we've got a statement here indicating that it's $45, that the road commissioners and selectmen have agreed upon. So we need to pay this road commissioner something, and that's what the surrounding town rate is.
So the $45, that's without an operator, correct?
Correct.
So you, we add on 27.
So you can make the motion for the amount plus the rate.
Plus operator rate.
We shall have it sorted out.
So what was the rate?
Forty-five.
Forty-five.
Even?
Even.
Make a motion that we pay District One and District Two for a roller of $45 an hour without operator.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? All opposed? All right, so we got a compactor rate.
Did you, did the road commissioner, was he fine with that?
I mean, I didn't really, I mean, I might have mentioned him, but I'm not sure I told him because, you know, I love him. I mean, he's the best before he done, did the work, or, I mean, we don't generally say, you know, Cheryl, are you okay? I think he'll be fine. I didn't clear it with him, if that's what you're asking.
Oh, you don't have to.
It's about the point.
Who's that? Just to back up a smidge. What kind of compactor roller are we talking?
It's a, it's a rubber tie.
The one that was sitting down on.
Go ahead.
On.
Flat ground.
Flat ground road?
Yep.
Okay.
It's only worth 45 bucks an hour?
It's worth more than that, because you had to operate and everything else to it. You're up to 70, 80 dollars an hour.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I just.
That's the state rate. We had nothing else to go buy.
That's fine.
The grader only gets 100 and something.
Okay, yep, that's fine.
The 100 with the rate, with the?
It's all about that.
102 is like 81.
With the operator?
With the grader rate, it is.
Right. And the grader, I have to presume, is what you would use the bucket to smooth it over if you didn't have a compactor? Is that what they use?
Oh, you grader road, then you roll it.
Yeah, two different things.
Roll it with the compactor?
Two different things, yeah.
Grade it first and roll it.
Okay, that's fine. That's good.
That's the one.
Bushes it.
I'm fine.
All righty, if we're going to go on to F, pole permit.
Pole permit. Central Main Power would like to replace four poles in the intersection of each road, Sam Page Road, and in that area, and they've got a nice little map on here for you. So something that requires a municipal.
Just swap those, right?
Yeah, there were replacements, replacement poles.
Stalling for it.
Speaking of poles, while you're, I forgot to mention in my update, just for the, in public that may be watching this, so we are handling or have handled to the best of our ability the sign down or around the new bridge. We should mention that. So there was a sign.
Yes.
That was on a pole that, even though it wasn't a town pole, we took, we took the initiative, we removed it off the pole. It had vulgarities. It has since been moved back to a, back onto private property. The town of Acton has no authority to have that sign removed.
Well, they call it freedom of speech, unfortunately.
I mean, it's a four by eight. If you haven't seen it, I've got a nice text message.
Huh? Where's this?
Where?
Yeah.
New Bridge Road area.
Okay, that's what I thought you said, but. Do we need to sign this?
Yes, last page.
All right.
So we have done, we moved it the first time. The second time, they, they moved it back, so if you get any calls, I don't believe there's anything we can do, unless you tell me differently.
We need a motion on the pole permit, right?
Yeah.
Can I make a motion? We approve the pole permit?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. All right, freedom of information request.
Mr. Kusby has forwarded a freedom of information, looking for information regarding the Martella states that, since November 5th, that may be going into planning board packets for the 19th meeting. I have forwarded to enforcement. More of an FYI for you.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Good.
We got two Gs.
Yeah, I just wanted to see if any of those paid attention.
I see it.
And based on the time in the article, I will request that that gets moved to next week, from late.
Late this session?
The executive session, from late to next week.
All right. I wanted to, to, before we go into public comment, I meant to do it at the beginning, but we wanted to congratulate Caitlin here, who's running the camera for us. We heard she got student of the month at Sanford.
Caitlin, come on up.
I also hear she's a junior EMT, or almost a junior EMT. Look at her with her head down. You're a busy girl. You should be proud.
Very wonderful, very proud.
I just, I didn't want to forget that. I saw it on Facebook, too.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. All right, and with that, we'll move on to public comment. Anybody?
I'm going to rest it down. I'm very humiliated. I just want to thank you. The group did that effort to try to put a proposal together to correct the bridge. I know I've been involved in this. It's a lot of work, and to have people shut it down hurts, but thank you for your efforts and everybody else. Thanks for the work and credit. This is the one thing I'm sure you're doing at the road commissioner, I'm sure it's coming, but I hope they look at and often the group, it takes a tragedy, it's got some good down there on that bridge. I look at all the equipment and stuff that pulls across it. I'm surprised it's lasted this long.
Yeah.
I mean, I was around when that bridge was originally built 30 years ago, and we couldn't conform the Department of Transportation regulations at the time, and obviously there's still more to it now. So we do the best we can within an operational budget, but it's an ongoing thing. But thank you for your efforts.
Mr. Larry, can you just state your name for the record, so she has it gugits?
Richard Larry.
Okay. The board might not know who you are either.
Oh, that's, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'm 1480 West Shrew Drive.
The most pleasant mother ever. She was a peach.
My understanding was, last time that that was replaced, they used one of the pits to access.
Yeah, I'm sure they used.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, yeah, so I don't know if that's going to be, okay, so it could be done again if and when we do it, but.
You sold the lot that got knocked off.
Ah, okay. Oh, yeah, they might object. Hopefully they got a big garage door.
I was curious. I've been, as you know, I've been going through a lot of the meetings, et cetera, and I'm a little disconcerned with the fact is that I believe the last two of the four planning board meetings have not been televised. I was just wondering as to why.
One of them, I believe, they did not have anybody filming, and that was a mistake from our cable guy.
Correct. As far as we know, it's only been one. The last meeting, we did receive an email from the.
Was the last planning board meeting, it was in the last few days, it was not filmed either.
Right. No, this past meeting, which would have been held on, from a calendar up, on the 5th, November 5th, was not filmed. The department head from the cable did send us an email and said that he inadvertently missed it. His human, he made a mistake.
I believe.
The one prior to that was filmed.
The one prior to that was not.
I'll have to double check that.
I'm not mistaken. I'm pretty sure there's two missing, and I was just curious.
Okay, we're aware of one, and we just took it as human nature, but I'll double check it with our sober dates.